Yeah. He did not get any good head. They they are like twenty thousand acres. They have it all over every four whole week. Every everything about those which has that whatever is. Two thousand. Blue and orange. Garage. They might. They might be forty, but everybody's seriously. They might have been forty five. My fuck. Did he come with me? Who's the more than half of them? Girlfriend.
You still have high school you dropped off? Do you still have high school or?
Yeah, every morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Notice you. Bus is trying to wrestle out of there. This is all the parents are trying to get the kids in.
Oh, yeah.
I thought I saw you truck a couple of times.
Yeah. Yeah, I take him up there every morning. Ride the bus home.
Yeah. I actually. When I drove for a partway. Buses were full in the mornings. And the afternoons, the kids all go in her directions.
Oh, so here's different.
Yeah, here most of the parents. But more parents bring them in and then they're at home. Part of it's because some of my colleagues want to come past your house so early. I said, we really have to go later so early.
But now they don't really come that early at the house. It's like the. Thirty so. Comes up. The reason I started taking him was. He didn't be out there before we said.
Yeah.
In the dark. And that was.
Well, see, that's what I try to tell my colleagues is working backwards. You gotta get to high school if you're by east. Working around the backwards to figure out how early you gotta pick up the first batch. Whereas often times they they figure out, you know, trying to get that literature because they're as soon as they can. Hopefully, let's hit forty five, forty, it happens up there.
Yeah.
And that just pushes the high school too.
Yeah.
Middle schoolers love it because that's the only time they get all put into gym. They get the physical future.
Right.
So they they don't usually complain with the high schoolers and tell them to be kids. They will talk like parents in the dark.
Yeah. Now I take him in large. He he's anticipating that two more years he'll be done.
I drive.
Oh, yeah, how many of them we got?
We got six.
Six.
Yeah. It's down. I mean, they're down about four buses.
That's.
All good up the left.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How hot is this bed? What the temperature's gonna be like in this room?
One day.
One meeting to the next, isn't it?
Yeah.
I figured they'd be running the heat. Didn't realize they'd be running the air.
It's pretty chilly. Glad I put this on. Hey, how's it going?
Can I tell you that you're gonna have to sit in some place without without a sign? Here the ones that sets you up. Squeeze around.
Oh. Must be.
Who's chilling? Yes, robust, thank you, Charlie.
No lights, no water.
Posting carrots.
She did. No damage to the seat.
Are you good?
Hi.
Yep. Make yourself.
Can I catch Chris?
Chris, yes, C H R I S, Herring, H E R R I N.
And now. Yeah.
You told the commissioner.
Commissioner.
I'll put my name back this way.
I came by y'all's office last week. Yeah. How long's that process?
I I think last time I did it's been forever. It's like a three day turn. It's sort of the curse. No, no, we're we're basically knocked off. So.
Okay, good.
Right now. Right, yeah, we've already done all that. We had the we were. So I just got. I put all that on on the original application. I brought it here last Friday. Friday. Got because my builder was in there. He he planned it up last weekend. And he got backed up and stuff. This was couldn't do this. So they came in today and took everything off. Old stuff. But. They're ready to start with whatever. But. You know.
So this is when they sold them all in.
Right.
All the mobiles from here.
Okay. Okay. Right. Right. They used to be. Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You got your.
Yeah.
No, I.
Yeah, I got frisked again too. Yeah, he was like, I'm a man. I just took everything out. Yeah.
Really? So.
I found somewhere. Oh.
Just one thing. Exactly. We don't need no singing. Hey.
How are you?
Going?
Good. You. Great.
Good guys. Your uh.
Sure.
Your daughter in college yet?
Yes.
Where's she at?
You and she.
Make that transition. What's your matrix? She she slated for any internship show?
Cancelled last week. Yes.
Yeah, so killer is totally looking my employer. A fun. Perfect. Or just mobile network company in the world. They're courting sweet. So lots of lots of chance for expat assignments.
You have to get through the. Take all stuff that he. Oh. He just walked through.
Wow.
It is.
I ride bikes back in that way. And I was thinking I was gonna swing through, but I didn't ride this week. There's so much undeveloped.
About that one. To run around this town.
No kidding.
But it wasn't your model, but same.
Okay. All right, yeah, I was gonna say I I wasn't aware of another one of mine now.
It's a newer sports car. I didn't realize. It's in that bright green.
Would you let me in, please?
Do you have the liability?
That's good, I need deniability.
Or it's a fraud green car. Two's a little bit. So. Please. God.
That's a good question.
Is Mike still on the phone? Okay.
He's not here tonight. Right. I haven't got yet. Okay.
Well. Stir. We're wanting to know. Okay. Yes.
Oh, seventy eight. It's on the Walton County side of on. Get past the big fenced in area for Westland. There's a little commercial building there. It's it's just on the Walton County side of that commercial. It's just like three houses. Won't count inside of that. You can't you can't throw a rock and hit Walton County, but. If you play in the matrix, it might be. All right, as it is seven o'clock, I'll call to order this meeting of the O'Conne County Planning Commission. Good evening and welcome to the October eighteen, twenty twenty one, meeting of the O'Conne County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for final action. Tonight's agenda and sign in sheets for people wishing to speak are available outside the commission chambers. This is the procedure we follow. The O'Conne County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from the petitioner or petitioner's representative. Public input is received from a group representative or any individual speaking in favor of the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Public input is received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will also be limited to twenty minutes total. The petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in the twenty minute period. The public input session will then be closed. The planning commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of the planning department staff and or the petitioner. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the planning commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers. First item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes from August sixteenth. Commissioners, you have in front of you a copy of the minutes. Please indicate if you have any modifications, changes, or corrections. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'm a. A motion to approve by Matt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is not on the agenda, and it's a carryover from last month's not meeting. It is our responsibility annually to appoint a nominating committee. And the nominating committee's job is to nominate a slate of officers for the next year of the planning commission, a chair and vice chair. This year, our nominating committee is Stephen Strickland and Scott Green. Got to do, we need to do anything in particular other than acknowledge that?
No, but other than the. Probably put that as an item on the agenda for the end. I think that would be appropriate so that we amend the agenda so we have a record of that item being on there.
All right.
And then we can have that discussion in that at that time.
Okay, very good, thank you. First item of new business on the agenda is rezone P twenty one dash zero one fifty six Sapphire Properties LP. Yeah.
Famous chairman commissioners, your first item this evening is. Rezone P twenty one zero one five six Sapphire Properties. This is the site plan. You'll notice it's located in the western portion of the county. Along Monroe Highway or Highway seventy eight. The parcel number A zero two zero two two B. That's currently zoned AG. In the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is to rezone the subject property from AG, our cultural district, to AR, agricultural residential district in order to subdivide into single family residential lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets. The proposal. References the two the two lots. One, two. These are the representative images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the one condition. Thank you.
All right, now we'll hear from the petitioner or petitioner's agent.
Good evening, I'm Brett Thurman. I live at one sixty West Thompson Street, Bogart, Georgia. I'm an engineer at Armentraut Matheny Thurman, and I represent Rob Scott, the owner of Sapphire Properties LP, and you know, which is the owner of this parcel. Rob is interested in. Subdividing this property, which requires us to ask for a rezone for that so that we can have a more a lot. Additional house on this lot because only the. The AG zone doesn't allow us to have two lots because the parcel's only four point four two acres. So we're asking to subdivide a lot, about just over two acres per parcel there for two single family homes instead of the one existing. He's planning on renovating the existing home and then and then building a new one on the new lot. The the properties will share a driveway that's existing, it's already an existing gravel drive. To Highway seventy eight. It aligns generally with the curb with with the median cut. So it's fairly convenient. And it's got good access north and or east and west, and it's a pretty safe area there because it's got really good long sight distances. So I think this is a pretty. Small request here to ask for this rezone in order to add an additional single family house in an area in a in a in the type of house that's. Needed in O'Conne County and for for in order to. To sell or to to have. People, more residences in in this portion of the county. This time I'll close and be available for any questions you may have.
Robert Scott signed to speak.
Good evening, I'm Robert Scott. I own Sapphire Properties LP and manage member. I live at fourteen fifty seven Route Jackson Road. It's not too far from the site. Just wanted to thank you guys for considering it. We're planning on, you know, subject to approval, building a modest but nice house next to it, which is superior to what's already there. So I think it would fit in great and make it a great family home. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions, comments? Regarding this proposal?
Yeah.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Steve Strickland, I'll make motion to approve reason in case P twenty one dash zero one five six with one condition.
Motion to approve by Stephen. Do we have a second? Second by Penny, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Second item is rezone P twenty one dash zero one six seven Rosemary Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty one zero one six seven Rosemary Franklin. This is located on the. Located on the western portion of the county. Again, this is all Snowsmill. It's a parcel number A zero four zero two B. It is zone AG. In the rural places character area. And the request is a rezone from AG to AR in order to subdivide the property into two, three, a single family residential lots. There is a request accompanied special exception variance for P twenty one zero one six nine. To allow vehicular access to an existing street outside the subdivision and hardship variance P twenty one zero six zero one six eight to reduce the required width of the private access easement. Those will go to the board commissioners for approval. This is a site plan that you have in your in your packets, the the two parcels that they're wishing to split remaining, leaving the rear portion of the parcel remaining with the existing house. And staff recommends conditional approval with the two conditions. One, our standard condition number two would be no further subdividing, shall be permitted on the subject property. Thank you.
This time we'll hear from the petitioner or petitioner's agent.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman. I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road, Watkinsville. I'm here tonight representing my client, who is Mr. Darren Britt, who actually lives behind this property and and is has this this property under contract to purchase. The request tonight is for rezone from AG to AR. The existing property is fifteen acres. So it actually could be subdivided today into three lot, three five acre lots administratively with no rezone. The 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 request for the reason. Can you go back to the site plan, guy? The. The request for the rezone is because the for a couple reasons. As you can see, there's an existing house that's almost dead in the middle of the property. And then that thick dash line is the floodplain from the river. So the right half of this property is is pretty difficult to build on with floodplain and its steep topography. So the request is is to not increase any density. We're we're really just trying to do the the same density that we're allowed today. We're just trying to use better the better part of the property to build the three homes. We have submitted letters from all neighboring property owners in support of the rezone. So there would be no increase in density. If you look at out in that area, there there are, I counted twenty two other lots within two thirds of a mile on Snowsmill Road. They're all less than three acres. So would be closer to what we're doing here, and that doesn't even count. We're a third of a mile to the right to to Lane Creek subdivision where you got hundreds of houses that are less than one acre. So it it fits in the area. Again, we're not trying to increase density. We're just trying to re we're trying to use the better parts of the property for the the three lots that we're allowed today. With that, I will open up for questions. And again, my client's here if any questions for him as well. Like.
Thank you. And Darren Britt is signed up to speak. Would you like to speak?
Unless y'all have something.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else in the? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments regarding this request?
So on the proposal here, yeah, so the the cul-de-sac driveway is the proposal. I was reading here and that's when I clarify and make sure that the proposal is to install this new cul-de-sac driveway.
Yes, it would be a shared driveway for the three lots and, and and Guy mentioned the variance. I know you guys don't hear. If this was done administratively, there would not be a variance request for that because we're asked for a rezone. By code calls it a, a major subdivision at that point. And so we're asking for variance to go back to what we would be allowed to do today. But yes, it would be a, a shared drive going for all three lots. So, you know, no, no new curb cuts on the highway, in other words.
Any other questions for the petitioner or for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion from Penny Mills to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Scott Green. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Carries unanimous. Next item is preliminary plat for Allison Creek Farm plus or minus three point two seven acres. Guy, do we want to hear three and four at the same time?
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, per the Bishop subdivision regulations, the town bishop requires that as if you do not qualify as an administrative subdivision, which this would not under their ordinance. The planning commission has to make a recommendation on it before it goes to their council for final approval. So this is a subdivision that cannot be administratively subdivided because the lot is less than five acres. And it's proposed, and the property is owned, they are too. And then there's been a separate request that will go just to the council for the landscape buffer. Thank you. This is the plat, this is the preliminary plat. So there'll be two items, the preliminary plat and the final plat that will go before you guys sign it in for the plan for the council. And this is what you have in your package. Staff has reviewed this and staff has found that it meets the bishop ordinance, and so we recommend approval of, of this plat and the final plat. Again, I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Right, if you're not a, if you're not an AR two property, you cannot be administratively.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, my name is Abe Abu Hamdan. I live at twelve sixty-one Wendy Creek Drive, Watkinsville. Thank you for allowing me to be here before you this evening. I believe Mr. Herring covered the proposal very well. This is a B one property, zone property. It's always had commercial use way back in the days. It used to be Golden pantry way back. Went to truck office business, maybe some sales of cars. So it has, that's the, I believe the last one may have been. So the ordinance of the city of Bishop requires you to go through the planning commission if you're divine a property, even if it's zone. So we're not here to ask for rezone. It's really more of a procedural, procedural process to go through and have that approved by the planning commission. Part of this approval, you have to obtain other departments approvals, which we have done. And through that process through the environmental health, the public works, of course, and the planning does provide you, planning staff providing the recommendation for approval. From this body goes to the city of Bishop Mayor and council, and, and they'll take action on that. We'll be glad to answer any questions, and I'm covering both requests, of course, the preliminary plat as well as the final plat. Glad to answer questions, Chairman.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Is there anyone in the room? Seeing no. I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Do you have any questions, commissioners, comments regarding this report? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Does the bishop council made any comments on this?
No, not at this time. They, they will when it, it comes to them. So it comes to you guys first for approval.
Yeah, I'm aware. I just was wondering if they have weighed any opinions.
No, absolutely not.
Any other questions for staff or the petition? So we need two motions. Initially, our first motion will be for the preliminary plat. We have a motion to approve from Scott. Do we have a second? Second from Stephen. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion is unanimous. Now we need a motion on the final plat. A motion to approve by Scott. Second by Stephen. Any discussion? Favor, please signify by raising your right. Motion again carries unanimous. According to Guy, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of a nominating committee for a slate of officers for the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if we could, if we could have a, a motion to amend the agenda to add that item for discussion.
Motion by Matt, second by Scott Green. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Great.
You haven't amended.
Yes, and now we have the amended agenda that we can now address the nominating committee. And I think as Chairman spoke, that committee has been assigned Stephen Strickland and Scott Green. Thanks.
One final item before we adjourn. We have a new member of the planning commission. I want to welcome Chris Herring, who is taking over responsibility for post eight. Congratulations, and you have our. In that case, I need a motion to adjourn if we have no further business. Motion by Chris to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second by Stephen. Thank you, folks.